Third, we'll continue to engage leaders, strategists, and educators in ongoing professional learning to strengthen instructional systems and structures. And fourth, we will expand professional learning opportunities on the Clark County School District's Coaching Framework for Educator Success. Thank you for this opportunity to share the presentation regarding student achievement. At this time, we will pause and take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Mansell. Thank you, Mr. Mancy. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jara.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you, Dr. Mansell, Mr. Mancy for the presentation. I just want to thank our leaders in our schools, our staff, our teachers, our entire school community for for what you're seeing before you. We're not happy with the results in totality, but given where we're coming from, where we've been. And even this, as we kicked off the school year, we've seen some great reports. I do want to, I do want to bring attention to the board and to what you're seeing here in the systems that are put in place. We're following research by national experts. If you recall, in June of twenty one, the Council of Great City Schools released their report of mirrors or windows and really looking at systems in urban America, the seventy seven urban districts, looking at systems that where pilgrim and school districts are outperforming and really beating the odds in the students of level of poverty. What they do is an aligned curriculum that's aligned to their standards, professional learning, consistent professional learning and come back a balanced assessment. And then continue to relentlessly monitor. That's what we have been putting in place. And really, I, I last week, I was at our last and it's kind of had an opportunity to thank the Secretary for the federal dollars that the federal government, the current administration invested and we purchased instructional materials and that came to for us to be able to adopt Envision twenty twenty Amplify and then currently our ELA. So the future is bright for the Clark County School District. Our teachers are working extremely hard and really learning the curriculum. I was at school today and as I, as I'm hearing and seeing the teachers and their frustration because we're receiving the materials now for ELA. We should have received it this summer for the professional learning, but I said, just be patient and it will come. But I just wanted to to thank the team centrally, especially in our schools with the work that's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jara. Colleagues, at this time, we'll take questions. There are no questions at this moment. Let's go ahead and jump into questions. Let me jump in for the comment and we'll come back again to questions. Let's give some of them.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. And so my question goes back to page eight. And you made a statement that said, a stated doctrine of regulations. So from what I understand, at the Nevada Department of Education, they have to adopt it from the entire state and then it goes to the school district. And so that delay, and I'm not sure why the delay, but that delay made it impossible for us to start until March. When is that how I understand? I'm trying to be able to explain it. My mom, who's not involved in the day-to-day school system, and so do I have it accurate?
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char, Dustin Mansell for the record. Trustee Usmante Adams, you're correct. The state changed their law regarding their practice of adopting textbooks. Prior to about twenty eighteen, districts used to go through textbook adoption commission to select material and they would submit it to the state for approval. The good practice is the Nevada Department of Education conducts their own adoption process. They make recommendations to the State Board of Education, who then approves a set of textbooks. We are not allowed to select tier one instructional materials unless it is on that state adopted textbook list. Once that list was approved in March of twenty twenty three, we then were able to conduct in our community have the textbooks that were only on the adopted list come to us for a review and selection process with a team of teachers and school-based administrators. They then selected the material, which then we worked with the purchasing department to have a contract to come. So yes, we can only select materials from the states and we have to wait for them to publish that adopted list.
Thank you for helping me understand that process. And then I just do have another question then. I don't know what page it was, but it was about setting the targets from the original plan, which were three pandemics. So I don't know what. But my question is, nobody anticipated the pandemic. And so now that this region has gone through the crisis is, is there a thought to reset the target because it was abundantly aggressive, right? A hundred percent. So is there a thought process to change the target or and when could it be changed now that we know more of the realistic picture?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, trustee Usmante Adams. That is part of where, and absolutely right, very aggressive coming in. And I think right now, you know, a lot more as we recover, well, we are waiting and, and, and working with the board. Once we go into the community, I think now, as we did last time, a little bit different this time for the strategic plan, whatever we call it, focus from six, from eight, whatever the board decides, this is the next step for the board to go into the community and set priorities. You know, the process we used last time was we looked at the research, we looked at where we were, we set the targets and it was approved by the board. So the determination, whether it's two years, four years, three years, that's going to be something that we're going to have to work together with the community. And as the community says that I've already spoken, they want the streams of books, but yes, so there will be that times and we're looking forward to doing that.
That is your man of one word indulgence. And so can't be the life, trying to be able to explain it to people not, you know, parents not involved in the day-to-day operations. Here one instruction material is important because if my child attends school in school age, but then we move across town and now attends will be there should not be a disruption for my child. Is that who I have it right?
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char, Dustin Mansell for the record, trustee Usmante Adams, you are correct. It's a district-wide tier one instructional purchase, which does mean that your child transfers from one school to another. They are familiar with the same instructional materials. Our district has also developed pacing guides. So every school is in about the same, we know that some teachers may have to adjust based on how their students are performing to the instruction. But yes, there's that consistency across every single school. Something to add to that is it's not just a benefit for our students who are transferring. It's also a benefit for our teachers who also transfer from one school to another. It ensures that every teacher can continue to provide high-quality tier one instruction with the same materials they are comfortable with and trade on to the one school to the other as they move. And it's also a benefit for our principals. So as assistant principals become promoted and they have been taught instructional years as an assistant principal, when they transfer to their new school into the principalship, they also now have the background knowledge and conceptual understanding of leading a campus with instructional materials they have professional learning on.
Thank you, trustee Usmante Adams. Along the lines of that question, in addition to the benefits of to all parties involved, am I hearing, am I hearing us say that the material, the tier one instructional materials are benefit in terms of outlets, however, also to the training, the training that staff and administrators receive for this or instructional pieces to provide consistent insight information to students. Is that, is that fair? And why is that important for our district?
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char for the record, Justin Mansell, trustee Garcia Morales. It is critical that every teacher receive ongoing professional learning and coaching to help with the implementation. There are a lot of components to tier one curriculum. And we have to build pacing guides to help them understand or to help guide when certain standards should be taught about consistency across the district. We have frameworks, what you're teaching, at what time throughout the literacy block, the math block, the science block. Look for tools to help with coaching. So as we see various components that could be enhanced, we know where to coach. That look for tool is also to find excellence in delivery of instruction because then we can use those teachers as our models or exemplar for other teachers who are just beginning their craft with using the materials. But it is critical that our district provide that district-wide professional learning to elevate everyone's practice as we continue to move forward.
Thank you for that. I have one more question around the tier one instructional materials. What, before March twenty twenty, March twenty three for our ELA instructional term, before we purchased those, when was the last time this state adopted, you can break along? Or maybe another way to ask this question, how long have we had our old curriculum?
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char, Dustin Mansell for the record. Trustee, that is amazing question. I can tell you with my nearly twenty-five years in the Clark County School District, I have never experienced a district-wide tier one curriculum across the district for English Language Arts, Mathematics, or Science. In fact, I spent about fourteen years in the classroom before becoming an administrator. I taught at five different elementary schools, all on the east side of town, and they all used something different. So the challenge for that was the students who would have often transitioned in those same schools on the inside of town, were learning something new every time they came in. And as a teacher, I had to start all over in my own understanding of how to deliver instruction, knowing that they all expected something different. So this consistency for our district, as I had said, is a win for everyone.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that insight. I see trustee Brooks is in the queue, trustee Brooks, and then I'll go to colleagues on the phone to see if they have any questions at this time. Trustee Brooks.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to labor the point about instructional material, but I do want to touch on a couple of things. One is, I know there is a tendency for people to assume that you're going to get this curriculum and out the gate, you're going to improve academic performance. I haven't known that to be the case. So what do you think is a reasonable estimate for meaningful gains in student achievement?
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char, Dustin Mansell for the record, trustee Brooks. What we've discovered is in year one is really exploration. The teachers, the administrators, region leadership centrally, we are really exploring the curriculum and building the structures to support the delivery. Year two is more analysis. We have implemented for an entire year. And now we're kind of wondering, okay, this worked, this didn't work, so we have to make adjustments. By year three, you start feeling comfortable with the delivery. That is on par with national practice. Speaking with colleagues across the nation, about three to five years to become very comfortable with using a new curriculum resource to support tier one instruction.
Thank you for that. And then I I actually went to the NDE's website just to look at their adoption cycle. It seems that it's pretty standard for their RFQs to drop in June and that they go to the board in March. So there might be some kind of reasoning. I don't know if it's the line to a budget. And you did talk about the difference between twenty eighteen and now and the process. Did something legislatively change or was this a, a, a process that was changed at the NDE level organizationally? And if you're not positive, it's okay. I can take the answer later. It is just something that I'm interested in knowing.
Madam President, members of the board, and I apologize for I wanted just to go back to the question around how long does it take? And I don't know, I mentioned, and we go back to the windows and mirror report. It's, it's, it was ten years of data looking at Nate, which is initially before card. And it was the districts that were highlighted was Chicago, Miami, Dallas, over the top three. And again, long tenure leadership of the board was of, and the same focus of ours. When you look at now phenomenal gains across the board, it's close to ten years of push for, for the nation's report, state report, major course.
I'm going to go on to trustee Cabasos and then trustee Zamora and then I'll post colleagues.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for telling us this presentation. You've already answered a question, so these are just, I really just have one question. I was very happy to hear, would be happy about the consistency and district-wide. I want to have one question that a constituent had asked me and we want to know about this embedded. I know you've already answered it for me. Can you elaborate a little bit on what that embedded coaching looks like?
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char, Dustin Mansell for the record. Trustee Cabasos got embedded coaching. So we have partnered with the vendors of the purchased material. They have instructional coaches or implementation managers who can go into the classroom with the teacher. They can model lessons. They can team teach a lesson. They can observe what is occurring in the classroom and provide input or coaching during or after the lesson. They are also available to meet with teams of teachers before a lesson to kind of talk about developing and delivering instruction using the materials. So it's based on teacher request. We work alongside school principals who may request it from their teachers, maybe for teams of teachers. But it really is an opportunity to work along someone who has more expertise in using the materials to just again elevate our practice with implementation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mansell. And it sounds really amazing because it sounds like there's a different pathway that that they can go in as far as what their needs are. So how much flexibility, you know, as far as we, where you said, you know, we not knowing what what people were expecting because we didn't have that consistency. Do the principals have a certain phrase of flexibility or wiggle room? Not just on the embedded coaching, but looks like they want to do with certain activities or certain programs. Can they go ahead and do that? Or does it have to be district approved?
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char, Dustin Mansell for the record. Trustee Cabasos, tier one instructional materials are for tier one. It's for all. But there is a process that each school can use to identify supplemental instructional materials based on the needs of their students and their community. So if they are finding holes or areas that their students are still struggling and mastering, that school can look at other resources and they can identify and decide to purchase those materials for their campus.
Thank you so much, sir. And that is really the answer to constituents' questions. So those would be more like site-based as long as they are aligned to our standards. Okay. And the only other thing I want to say is thank you for letting us know with this, this presentation of, you know, even with the small successes, you know, in math, that going forward, we know that we do have to address as far as we're painting our highly qualified veteran teachers and addressing the absenteeism. So I really appreciate that that is highlighted and that is acknowledged. And thank you again so much for achieving.
Thank you, trustee Cabasos. Trustee Zamora.
Thank you, Madam President. The last, thank you for the presentation. The last bullet point on your challenges, though. The students in grade three to five were in kindergarten to the grade to second grade during the COVID nineteen pandemic impacting critical years of literacy development. That one's really personal for me just having a fourth or fifth grader right now. So I can definitely relate to, to this being a huge challenge. And I'm a true believer that people who are closest to the problem are sometimes closest to the solution. So I'm wondering if there have been any conversations, maybe with this group of teachers that are teaching third through fifth grade, of what are they seeing and maybe some of their opinions of some solutions that might happen because they're the ones dealing with it.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char, Dustin Mansell for the record, trustee Zamora. Something that we began last year, working alongside teachers, we also received feedback from our site-based administrators. We developed tier two instruction expectations. It is a framework to support the identification of students who are not mastering these standards with tier one instructional alone. It's part of our NTSS framework. So we developed a system for one identifying students who needed additional support through formative assessment and/or diagnostic assessment. We also purchased centrally for schools based on their selection a tier two instructional resource or supplemental material to support students who are struggling with mastering the standard. And then we're also providing professional learning and ongoing coaching regarding the use of those materials, identifying students who need additional supports, and then how to target instruction based on that need of those children that are struggling or not mastering the standard.
I hear you. I think my question was more, are we having conversation, maybe like some type of field kids group with these teachers or around the issue?
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Char, Dustin Mansell for the record, trustee, that's a wonderful question. I do not have personal focus group conversations with teachers or principals, but I do have collaborative groups that are part of like a PLC collaborative. And we meet with them routinely to look at the structures on our campus. We talk about what some of the concerns and challenges are. In fact, we have a couple of principals trying something new for us to see if we could add that to our tier two recommendations that they can go out district-wide. So my connection is more to principals, not necessarily.
Okay, I'm just curious to explore. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Jara. I think you're trustee Zamora, Dr. Jara.
I think it's a great idea and something we should explore. I could because I do have this for round tables, but it's a, it's a good opportunity for, for me to look at.
I agree, just because we have this specific bullet point, specific grades that we're in over struggling right now. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zamora. I'm going to go to the colleagues in the air. Does he respond to you? Any questions at this time?
You do. Thank you for this presentation. I'm just curious about the schools that received their materials and were directed to, and this is for ELA, they were directed to utilize them with fidelity without the professional learning. Are we, are we going back and looking at that to make sure that they, they have that professional learning and that, that they have an opportunity to get to know the ELA curriculum the same way we did with our science curriculum? Because our science curriculum, we really rocketed. And so I'm just curious.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Jar of regular substantial for the record. We have been very clear with our principals that we are meeting schools where they are with the implementation of our ELA tier one instructional materials. In fact, we just conducted professional learning with principals during the month of September and we're continuing that work in October. Region leadership, region superintendents, school associate superintendents, myself, Dr. Mansell. We're all engaging in that professional learning as well with our principals, learning alongside them. Dr. Jara and myself have been very clear that this is a work in progress. We're going to work together. We're going to learn together to implement these materials.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, trustee Usmante. Trustee Williams.
I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. I'm going to turn on, turn it over to trustee Cabasos.
Thank you, Madam President. One is just a very brief follow-up question to trustee Zamora's question. So we don't have any roundtables or any teacher committees. I thought we'd have some, but there were super chats.
Madam President, members of the board, trustee Cabasos is correct. We did in last spring and summer, and we just have not gone back to. But as first this morning said, it would be a great opportunity to have conversations because I did know that a lot of different things, but at this point we are
Thank you so much for the clarification. As I remember, it was mentioned with our various senior teacher of the year and it was talked about. And I have a couple of questions about it. So thank you for the clarification.
Right, I'm going to turn it over to public comment. We'll begin with individuals who signed up in advance. Ms. Anna Binder, Becky Credell, all of that, I've been watching yellow cards that were submitted in advance or submitted when this item opened. And it's Mr. Henry Flaherty. So just yesterday, we had our first annual SOT meeting at our elementary where we talked about all of these very really great things. I am super, super happy that as our principal was promoted up into regional, the principal that Superintendent Jara hired for our school is very well invested in PLC and the tier one, tier two. She came from central office and was very deep into all of the things that, you know, teachers need. So she was our choice because we knew that the teachers on our campus needed the support in implementing the new curriculum. I know this Credell is going to talk about some other issues here in a second. But I just want to let you guys know that our SOT meeting yesterday was amazing. She is allowing the leaders at our building to help her. Everybody meeting everybody where they are at. We are on our, I believe, second school year of being a one-star school. However, as you guys are most familiar in some of our work sessions a couple of years ago, coming out of COVID, after meetings with the state, we knew that it was going to take us a couple of school years to get us back to the levels that we were pre, pre-pandemic. So I'm really grateful to see that data coming forward. And like the superintendent said, it's nowhere near where we'd like to be. But at least our numbers are starting to taper off back to pre-pandemic and we can only really hope to go up from there. So again, I just wanted to thank the superintendent and whoever else was behind giving us that principle because she is amazing. I know she's only what, like nine weeks on the job, but she's definitely doing her job. And then region three, we're also very blessed because Ms. Smith, our previous principal is now region three, I think assistant superintendent. I don't know, but I saw her on my team this morning and was very happy to see her. She's an amazing leader too. So at least I know Adam Henderson and for region three, we have some really great things in the pipeline and I think our communities are going to keep benefiting from those decisions and changes. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, carry on for the record. I teach reading all day and day. And it has helped me fall back in love with teaching. I, it's last year, my principal asked me to start a reading center at our site. It's his new motto. And I didn't really know much about it until I became training. And so we do smaller tier two instruction in our school every day. This year, my administrator took it from two people to four. We're serving two hundred and sixteen students at the reading center. And watching them learn to love reading is the best thing ever. I had a parent stop me in the lobby. It's only been a month that we've been doing it. And she says, my daughter has never read books on the way to school before. And now books are accessible to her and she's reading all the way to school and all the way home. Kids are excited to come in. I get to put a book in her hand every day for thirty minutes. And it is the best thing. The lessons created by the ELD department to use for the tier two instruction are amazing. And we do phonics with them. We test every child, every single child. And we do phonics with them, we test every child, every single child, we pinpoint where their gap is. And then we put them in groups to work on, and it's silent E or vowel teams or whatever it is, sort of working with them. And the growth we're seeing is amazing. And if schools don't have a reading center, I suggest they look into it because it has been the best thing I've done in teaching, and I didn't even wanna leave my second grade classroom, I wasn't sure I was gonna like it. And my administrator knows me better than I do, and I absolutely love it. So it's, it's an honor and privilege that I hope other teachers get to experience. And I see the growth already in a month in these kids, and it's going to help them in every way because reading is the foundation of anything that these kids wanna do in life. So I just wanna thank the district for having the reading center program. I think it'd be a huge um, asset for schools to bring in. I heard that our Transformation Network schools brought them in this year. I think that was a very smart thing to do. And um, I just wanna say thank you for having reading centers. Thank you for getting the curriculum, I know it's tough. But I think in the end, it is going to help raise our score, and as a reading teacher, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bailey.
The school district for the last four or five years has been setting students up for math. I've been talking to people in the district many times, I've presented to this board a few times about what we're doing to set students up. I've explained to this board over and over again, math is unlike other subjects. The order where you teach math is important, having mastery is important, and having that automatic state is important. And your policies are on against that. Now, you wanna talk about having teachers use code fidelity, which is clearly getting in the way of helping us to learn. The idea of math being hard is just plain nuts. The nice thing about math is the math taught in elementary school is the same math as taught in secondary school. The only changes are vocabulary, notation, and the pattern development makes problems a lot easier. So in elementary school, we might teach about expanded notation and algebraic classes, all the polynomials. In elementary school, you've talked about the little slides and turns, those transformations are called reflections, translations, rotations, and cycles. The way you multiply in fifth and sixth grade is exactly the way you can multiply polynomials and basically. The point I'd like to make is, if we don't connect, if we do not link, and your current materials that you have just purchased, don't link those concepts and skills, which makes math a whole lot harder to learn, and that's wrong. In terms of professional development, I was offering class on base of math facts and strategies to make learning the strategy of science. So when I explain to teachers, you look at these patterns, when you subtract the same numbers, for instance, you get zero. On a daily, you recognize the pattern of one. If you subtract numbers that have consecutive numbers in the units column, like twelve minus three, thirteen minus four, fourteen minus five, fifteen minus six, the answer is always nine. If you subtract consecutive even or odd numbers in the units column, like twelve minus four, thirteen minus five, fourteen minus six, the answer is always eight. What are the teachers telling me? They can't use those patterns to make the, allow the kids to learn those easier. Rather than learning ten simple strategies for subtraction, we're gonna have to memorize a hundred different facts installation. You set kids up to fail forty years ago, and we're at, I think I heard twenty-two percent efficiency, great. I talked to Mr. Mansell's department about a year and a half ago, they didn't need help with that. We're at twenty-two percent efficiency, good deal. Bottom line is, the new policy is gonna do the same thing, because we ask teachers to use simple, very broad examples of words and then go ahead and scaffold.
Thank you, your time is up. All right, we're gonna move on, colleagues. Phil, your time is up. And you. Yeah. We are now, uh, thank you. Uh, we actually, for anyone, uh, we have to. And Mr. Bayless. Let's see. Just right now.
Before you even started, guys, nice try.
Sorry, Mr. Bayless, we're gonna have to wait. Um, I know you know how this works.
Oh, you got more people that called in first?
No.
Okay, so it should be right there.
Mr. Bayless, we are going to. Thank you, we will continue, and we'll be sure to uh, call on you during.
Well, it was based on this topic, so I have, I've already signed up, oh, so you can't use that twice. But no, it was.
Um, I failed to uh, at this point in the house for another series of questions. There are no questions that are. Mr. Bayless, in many meetings, and you know that, uh, engaging in this matter is not.
Well, correcting is engaging.
Your first warning, please don't ask, have you asked? All right, colleagues, at this time, uh, there are no other questions. I'm gonna ask very much. Trustee Brooks.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I move to a, accept the word report under everyone on.
And you, trustee Brooks, trustee of the under-ends.
I second that motion.
Thank you, trustee of some under-ends. Colleagues, we have a motion by trustee Brooks, a second by trustee of some of the ends, please pass your vote. Colleagues on the phone, trustee Wuzan.
I.
Trustee Williams. Thank you. All right, colleagues, that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. We're gonna move on to item four point oh one, this is public comment, I have stopped listed as actual items in the agenda. Before I continue on. Before I continue on item four point oh one, if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this item. Please make your yellow card, otherwise, once we begin the item, we will not be accepting. I'll give everybody a second or so. So I will no longer be accepting yellow cards. We'll begin with the individuals who signed up in advance. Mr. Bayless, you're first, followed by Tiffany Berman. Followed by Anna Binder, and then Vicki Credell.
Well, I guess this is a public comment, why are you talking, it was, I'm hurting families, but I'll first address my party. I didn't, I didn't split the yellow card prior, actually, it's a video, why are you still talking? So obviously, it was prior to the submission, so let's just put that out there, I'll put it away. Um, so hurting families, wouldn't you think that we've been going through, watching politics where everybody yells about kids being put in cages, um, kids being taken away from their families? Um, kids starving, families being burnt apart. But wouldn't you think the, if the Democrats are yelling about kids being put, put in cages, and half you guys are Democrats? Um, shouldn't you guys yell about putting kids in cages for no JJD?
Mr. Bayless, what does that have to do with public education?
Um, this is a public education, my primary is get, uh, you know, you can't wrap my, my agendas, nice try, really.
You know, it is cool to comment, however, we only have the restriction. CCSD?
Uh, no, actually, I have a public comments that's hurting families, it's my topic. I, I think I wasn't. Well, you still letting them drop down. You just dropped me down, not up.
I'll share this one more time.
Okay, so anyway, as I was saying. Well, this is related to our school, the district, you guys are trying to arrest my kid, that's inappropriate. But as I was saying, moving on, as we're talking about the curriculum, since you wanna go on that. Um, they were talking about um, the distance when you try to choose, get a kid in front of one zone or another. I moved from Valley to Foothill. They said it was gonna take four weeks to get it moved. So Valley decided to keep them in Valley, their, their system, while we went to foot, while we went, moved up to Henderson, and we're in Foothill's territory. So they actually, your guys kept it in Valley, while we already had moved, because we're in this, so they said there's no sense in moving them, that's a lot of work. So I didn't have the email. Um, so I don't think this gentleman was a hundred percent accurate. Um, I know I've been reaching out to you guys as far as language, I shouldn't even have to repeat myself about that. My kid was supposed to graduate this year, it's not gonna be able to. Um, thanks. Um, so yeah, that's a situation to handle with as far as the curriculum. The problem is, we have IEPs, right? Like this gentleman was talking about math. My son has some issues with math and reading, he's failing already past third grade. You know how I taught him math? Football, calculus, arm back, throw. How much pressure do you need to get it to point A or B? Okay, trigonometry, when you play pool, an ankle shot, boom. Get to their level, make them understand, not what you understand. It don't help, because you don't get the grade, they do. It's an IEP, individual educational plan, not an all-in-all. So you might wanna you know, you guys sound great on math, but you might wanna actually learn the laws wider than that.
Followed by Anna Binder, Vicki Credell, and Stephen Phillips.
Good evening, Dr. Tiffany Beagle for the record. May nineteen eighty-eight, Oakdale Elementary School. A group of fifth graders were learning about fractions, when the walls of our portable classroom shook with a fury that truly felt like the world was ending. We thought we might be in an earthquake. Being ten years old and curious, we ran outside onto the stairs in time to see a large pot of smoke caught to the southeast of the city. Adcock is located at US ninety-five in Torrey Heights. That's how far away you can see the smoke from the infamous Pat Con explosion. My teacher, Mrs. Dumas, yelled at us to get back inside. She told us to duck and cover under our desks. There were thirty-six of us left in that portable, that was thirty-five years ago. Portables have been used in CCSD for a long time. They were designed to be temporary solution to classroom overcrowding issues and have become a permanent fixture. Some schools forced to have over twenty portals on their campuses. And many have major issues. For example, ceiling tiles that fall out when it rains, mildew and strange smells, holes in stained carpets, stained walls, stairs, accessibility, and size issues. I have an elementary portable, and it's way too small for thirty-five teenage humans, their bags, the tables and chairs, textbooks, my supplies, and me. Other issues reported by different sites are cats being sealed under the structures, scorpions, bugs, rats, theft, especially with these new three thousand dollar attractive panel TVs in them, drive-by shootings in classrooms walls with actual bullet holes in them, blow breakers, beehives in the walls, mold leaks, new thermostats that are controlled by central, so it's either ridiculously hot or cold. There's no inclement weather protection for our students as they walk in and out of the building. When it rains, they are soaked. They come into our freezing portals and they can't even turn on the gears. There are no fire sprinklers, so we have to evacuate from fire drills. It's scary because who knows what's waiting for us outside. The people in the neighborhood know we evacuate, but they watch us do it. The bathrooms are all inside the building, so it takes ten minutes of instructional time for a student to go to the bathroom, and that's if they can find an exterior door that's unlocked. There has to be a solution to portable classrooms. Perhaps getting rid of the AB block schedule could be it. Students only need twenty-two and a half credits to graduate them out. When unlocked schedule, students earn eight credits per year or thirty-two credits by the time they graduate. That's a lot of extra classes. Block schedule itself is an issue when you look at the amount of minutes per class versus a traditional schedule. Block schedules see students every other day for eighty-five minutes, giving you a total of seven thousand four hundred eighty minutes per school year. While a traditional schedule sees students for fifty-five minutes every day, or nine thousand six hundred eighty minutes, that's thirty-six hours difference. And let's not forget how many times student instruction is interrupted for presentations, testing, picture days, et cetera. Students on block lose a lot of instructional time compared to traditional or modified, modified schedule. And schools on block schedules seem to have more portals than non-block schools, because they require more teachers. I leave you with this thought. In the past, administrators have used teaching in portals as punishment for teachers they want to get rid of. At some sites, portals are located right next to the dumpsters. I wonder what perception that gives of the classes that are located next to the trash. Thank you.
Anna Binder. And then Vicki Credell, Stephen Phillips.
Um, uh, thank you, Madam President, Superintendent Jarrah, members of the board, and Anna Binder for the record. Um, I actually was just coming tonight, um, we didn't think that uh, there was gonna be much here, but that's kinda why I passed the first time, but sounds like you passed this time. Um, as you know, I'm currently sitting in a place in the board room where I used to normally sit. And um was just fine, and I am still fine, but the very person sitting behind me has pinpointed me as a, I think, rain leader for standing up to them. They've been plastering my face all over their stupid Facebook pages. I'm gonna say that, I stand by that. So I'm standing here tonight to continue to let my community and our community know that we will not allow the normalization of hate to be present in this room. Whether that comes from the board and its leadership, or us as our, as the community, we will stand for it. The aggressions we are seeing that include targeting our board, students, parents, staff, and educators is, um, excuse me, I'm speaking. Thank you. I'm sorry, that it's hard to have a, being a part.
Yep, okay, members of the audience. Um, excuse me, Miss Binder, I have to pause your time. I need a moment, please. Thank you.
Why is she attacking members?
I'm asking, uh, members of the audience.
Members of the audience, personally, yeah, you have not stopped her.
Yes, and I know you're familiar with being in the room in this moment.
I guess.
And I'm gonna ask you, this is your name, oh, yes, yes.
Are you gonna let her talk like that when she gets up there? No, you're not.
This is a business meeting, we have a difficult time conducting ourselves through the document that nature was, uh, that is available outside. Those of you especially who have been to board meetings, understand, it's a business meeting, you're addressing the board, not the audience, and the audience is not used to be providing commentary in any way should work. If you have a difficult time in striking those rules, we will give you one warning, then we will ask you, or we will ask.
We respectfully ask her not to.
I'm not gonna ask you again, I just.
We respectfully ask you to stop her.
And I didn't just say, I don't need a back-and-forth dialogue. This is Miss Binder's time, when it is your time, and you're on podium, you're welcome to speak.
Really?
And if you have a hard time doing that, that's with anybody in this audience. You have a difficult time conducting yourself with your form and following the rules, we will ask you to do. Thank you. Miss Binder, please continue.
Thank you, Madam President. Clark County School District is the largest employer in Southern Nevada, as well as home to over three hundred thousand students. I applaud this board and our lawmakers for protecting, protecting marginalized populations that live next to us, among us, and with us, and we will stand and continue to advocate for their safety and the most successful education in future that we can build for them. Thank you.
Vicki, Stephen, and K R.
Vicki Credell for the record. Over the last few years, I've heard a lot of outrage directed at school districts. Some of it's about things that schools have no control over. It's interesting that what I haven't heard is outrage over some of the things happening in our schools that your educators are also concerned about. Here's a few of them. The fact that thousands of CCSD students every single day are in a classroom without a licensed educator because of our shortage. Our students are being placed in portable classrooms, which are located near the street, and don't feel safe to them, or the educators teaching. Our support staff, which our schools could not run without, are often not making enough money to afford housing in Las Vegas. In elementary, when we don't have enough subs, we have to split our classes, which puts the kids in all different classrooms, and the learning is less than ideal on those days. That children in Nevada are considered at-risk readers on one test result. Student behaviors are escalating to the point where there are times when very little gets done because we're trying to manage problematic behaviors without support. My school has one counselor for over seventy. My school has one counselor for over seventy years' children and no social worker. Educators are not treated as respected professionals in many schools. With all the standards and curriculum that we have to teach, we have no time for teachable moments and fun time in our classrooms anymore. Your educators have so many things to do on most days that we cannot possibly get it done in the time that we have. Most concerning is that fifty-five percent of all educators nationwide are considering leaving their district or leaving the profession permanently. It's already happened. Without educators in classrooms, we won't have classrooms to have to be open for kids at all. I think that's something that we should all be outraged about. Thank you.
Stephen, Stephen Phillips. There are, and we find it.
Well, members of the board, I'm Stephen Phillips. I'm here today to express my concerns and grievances regarding the educators and teachers contracted systemic issues thereof. First, I want to clarify my position on this issue as a part of public education and our educators and teachers' right to a fair wage. This is not a new issue. In fact, this issue goes back several decades. I remember when I was in high school, there was, at the time, the issue and concern of some of the extracurricular activities, such as music programs like that and other programs such as theater during my senior year being cut from the following year. However, the number one concern at that time was in fact teacher pay. This speaks to a systemic pattern in our, which our tax dollars are meant, which are meant to help fund our community's education programs and what's more, are being misparaded and misused. One might think this problem is isolated and due to potential incompetence. However, the facts and evidence point to a much larger and far more insidious corruption, practice standing throughout the civil court system, medical fraud aspect to it, as well as school corruption involved. Which leads me to my next point. As we all know, and witnessed at the last board meeting, certain bad actors and certain groups, the names of which I will not say, coordinated and concerned in efforts to disrupt and drive division within our community. This is not the first time that this has happened, nor would be the last. So the question becomes, why? Why are certain bad actors or racist actors doing this? Well, I can tell you the answer, and it's quite simple. Who do we know with the initial J G that is associated with certain groups? Well, guess what? I discovered in my coverage of the Broadway Corrion, you shouldn't corruption of Roger Hillgar's case, this same individual. A false attorney, Mr. Hillgar's. The definite air, the actual fact, it goes much, much higher up. Consider this your official verbal notice of liability, we have clarity, and we have a group, and I need to what is actually occurring and how the corruption inherent C C S D among the administration staff is linked and connected to similar corruption occurring in law ground agreement. Here's my proposal regarding the teacher contract. One, ensure that the law through challenging the unconstitutional law of previous teachers. So. If our teachers and educators, the decade law overdue raise in contract data, there, by rate, I mean, no, that at least double the wages, more, I'm inclined to encourage increased pay in each teacher and educator respectively. With all that money that is being rocketeered, I'm sure you can find a way. Make that occur, since we all know this, or members of this board are perfectly capable of cooking. Maybe reasonable demands, that is, of course, unless you want all of the evidence that links.
You may just, uh, for the record, if you have any specific concerns, please address, especially around, um. You mentioned lecturing, please send us those to ethics point, there is a process for something along those lines. And we did receive some documentation, so we'll move into the record. Kiara, not present, oh, forgive me, yes, come on here, please. Um, Kiara, okay? Yeah, come on. Please state your name for the record. Welcome.
Good evening, you know, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Jarrett, and Trustee Zamar. I am Reverend Lee, I am from the Bunded Peace Church of Christ. I mean, Bunded Peace United Church of Christ and Urban Rainbow Gender Emergence Ministries. I'm here today to speak in favor of your current policy P. Fifty-one thirty-eight, that's under effect. Addressing the rights and the needs of students with diverse gender identities and expressions. As a reverend and a man of trans experience, I want to express how important it is that you continue to keep this policy. The policy allows students to feel safe, accepted, and seen. And heard. When a student is allowed the basic rights of safety and support, they will be able to thrive not only at school, but at home and in their personal lives. This policy doesn't infringe on others, but it only enhances the ability for all students to learn and thrive together. Jeremiah one and five says. Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you, and before you were born, I set you apart. I appointed you as a prophet of nations. Also in Luke six twenty-seven through twenty-three, it says, but to you who are listening, I say, love your enemies, do good to those who hate you, bless those who curse you, and praise those who mistreat you. I ask you to remember that we are not born with hate. It's something that's taught. So let us teach our students to tolerate, love, and accept those whom are different from them and not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Herman. All right. We leave that in, so we have our individuals sign up in advance, we're gonna move on to the young parts that were submitted. On time, uh, beginning with Kathy, Kathy, you're gonna have a coffee with your last name. Hasn't like. Very quick. He's correct, for the record, followed by Jane, um, Audette, and Leslie Quinn. I want to make sure the uh, silence or silence.
For the record, my name is Kathy Kiesel, I'm a fifty-year resident of Las Vegas. We're concerned.
Good me, forgive me, Kathy, allowing a moment, please, can you pause Kathy's time? Uh, I see that there's a little bit of distracting, something happening up here that's distracting us from public comments, sir. Allow us one moment while we figure this out. Sir, excuse me, hi, Jennifer, me, um, sir, are you trying to snip all the comment for, um?
Yeah, this is the last.
Unfortunately, we've closed public comment already for that item and we're no longer accepting public comment.
I asked why you do that.
Uh, yes, so that, this doesn't happen, actually. Um, unfortunately, we have, uh, we have to close it off, otherwise we would continue to be receiving it even after the item. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask a question.
Kathy. Kathy, thank you, um, your time will hold until you, please go ahead.
I was here two weeks ago, and by now you've heard some of the people speak on this topic, but I imagine, I hope that you're not tuning us out. Um, I'd ask you to really, really listen. I don't believe that what's happening in our schools or policy, Bible brigade is pure evil, and the Bible judge all of us on our actions. It may not have been anyone's intent to be evil, but what is going on with policy fifty-one thirty, we're using it. It's putting our children at risk with pornographic books in our schools. Along with the opposite biological sex kids being allowed in restrooms, lockovers, and so on, which lends itself to biological roles being robbed of scholarship opportunities. And helping these kids transition when they are not emotionally mature enough to make those decisions is inevitable. There are many cases out there of those who have transitioned down, changing their minds when they become adults and wanting to reverse it, or the damage is already done. And what about Yelly Martinez, who in two thousand nineteen committed suicide after transitioning by jumping in front of a trimmage seventeen? Kids are just not mature enough to make those decisions. You can watch that documentary on W W W dot gendertransformation dot com. I don't think that you all want to have that responsibility. In the Bible, Matthew eighteen six says, but whoever causes one of these little ones who won't even need to swim, it would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck, and he would drown in the sea. And it also says that, what will you do, well, to the world because of offenses? For offenses must come, but well to that man or woman by whom the offenses come. This verse underscores our duty, your duty, to protect the innocence and well-being of our children. And that responsibility lies with you. Regarding the bathroom issue, according to New York Post article, hundreds of students in Pennsylvania walked out of class a few weeks ago in protest of the jet, uh, which plans bathroom policies. The girls feel very uncomfortable and that their privacy is being violated with biological boys in their private space. We are the adults, we are the ones that are supposed to protect our children, not leave them dependent on yourselves. Please leave the parenting to the parents and concentrate on raising our national scores and teaching our children, renewing curriculum. In closing, I urge you, the school board members, to please take a look at the policies that you claim replace that damaged our innocent little children in teenagers. And make the decision to repeal policy fifty-one thirty, to remove those pornographic books from our schools and not to allow opposite genders to be where they should not. Thank you.
I do see from public comment that there are several individuals who'd like to speak. Um, public by, uh, policy, uh, regulations, five one thirty-eight. I want to know for the record that policy five one three-eight addresses the rights and needs of students with diverse gender identities and expressions that is correct, and that this policy was adopted in twenty eighteen after S B, Senate Bill two twenty-five, assigned into law from seventeen. So while I certainly would love, uh, would like to, would like to hear from everyone's public comment, I need, um, it gets really important for us to state that, that, um, this district want to create a safety margins for all students. And, um, if there are specific concerns about state law, that they should be addressed to the appropriate party. Okay. Jane, not add, followed by Leslie Quinn, and then Louise.
Uh, good evening, Dan, as a student. Um, I do want to say that I am supportive of fifty-one thirty-eight, and I'm going to say its title because it's, it's said repeatedly, I addressing the rights and needs of students with diverse gender identities and expression. Um, our current political environment fairly misled some of my fellow citizens to monitor and feel this policy, which provides some very important support for marginalized and vulnerable children. Um, particularly seem to be targeting trans students. But that's not really what I want to talk about tonight, I want to talk about bullying. Um, since I moved here, done a little learning, and in addition to fifty-one thirty-eight, y'all have done a really good job of pushing forward anti-racist, equity, and inclusion policy, as well as the safe and respectful learning comparative policies. And to me, those are all really important, is ensuring that all students are getting what they need to protect their development and their learning at school. So I'm a retired school social worker. And I served K twelve schools in three different states for.
You're not a retired student.
So I think I know a little bit about the range of needs that families and students bring to us. When they come.
Change us one moment, please.
Thank you.
Are you allowing that?
Um, well, I'm just for the. I can't say my surprise for us. And I just. Yeah, and like, I want to sit in front of you when you. And it's madam president, you know. Check in and follow, sit over there, I'm down. From you, exploited online by these people. But I'm standing, yes, all are here to, with our consideration. What do we want to get that for?
And, and I'm sorry, I'm staying here. Excuse me.
Down.
I'm gonna ask everyone, with the exception of the editor, who is providing public comment, to sit down, letting you serve.
Okay.
I'm asking you, sir.
Just sit on the seat.
Ladies and gentlemen. This is the board meeting. There are tools that we there are rules that we expect people who attend this business meeting to uphold. You have a difficult time, this is now, uh, the second time I ask people in the audience to remember this is a business meeting. Is there something, buddy? That I just said?
I'm just enjoying my life, sitting home watching TV.
Now, I am going to I am going to, uh, remind members of the audience that if you are having a difficult, if there, uh, there are incidences of bullying or threats, so please report that to the proper authorities. And, um, and that is my request. Jane, thank you so much for being patient, your time made continually.
Thank you for your work. So, social work has been really strong in times. That all students and their parents have a right to respect that their individual, it says, human beings are understood and blessed by your behaviors. Um, the presence of your policies show that that's important to this district. Um, bullying is going to interfere with the meeting of those needs for all of you. Bullying cannot easily walk us into our schools, I don't think, because of the president, presence of those policies that protects students. However, um, bullying seems to advance right onto this district policy and writing to its supporters. With confidence. Um, a bully will always target the most vulnerable enjoying, inspiring, hearing chaos. And you don't need to be a social worker to know that most of us have experienced bullying in our lives, so we know what that is. If our community and our board allow the escalation of this bullying behavior that we're seeing right now, without standing up now, more students, teachers, families, and community members. that we're seeing right now, without standing up now, more students, teachers, families, and community members are likely going to be targeted.
Thank you, Jane.
My name is Leslie Quinn. I am a registered voter in Clark County. I am a mom and a grandma. I am here today representing myself. I love teaching reading. In fact, I taught many students how to. The purpose of reading is to include and gain a deeper, a deeper understanding of a text, increasing reading comprehension, expanding vocabulary, and improving one's writing skills. There are public school library books that have been curated by C C S D librarians. Books that are not in line with the definition of reading, what reading is all about. I respectfully ask that those graphic books be removed immediately, as they do not follow the benefits of what reading is all about. In fact, the obscenity laws N R S two oh one point two three five through two five four would cause an adult providing this material to a child to possibly be incarcerated, or if a parent, potentially to lose their rights to their children. It is apparent that books with such deplorable language, acts, and photos are only providing accommodations for pedophiles. Please, stop grooming the Nevada's most vulnerable, our children. Let them be innocent children and stop stripping this away with inappropriate literature. C C S D trustees are supposed to be nonpartisan and considerate of the rights and needs of all students and parents. However, disrespect to parents that do. If these parents want these books to min uh uh there was a C C S D trustee here that disrespected parents on September twenty eighth and scoffed uh at these parents to um and brandished a sign in parents' faces. All parents, I I mean, this is to the tune of their job description, um not allowing them to do such thing, and they did it anyways. All parents and peoples that witnessed this event should file an ethics complaint against that C C S D trustee. It's not a joke. These are children's lives. They're innocent. They're going to grow up to be our leaders. My hope is that the state of Nevada is Okay, fine. My hope is that the state of Nevada is more than destination litter box where anything goes, where children are the products and human life is valued by what the consumer will pay. Yes, standing up for the innocence of children is not domestic terrorism. Thank you.
Please refrain from clapping after any flying stairs coming. Welcome to even pass hands and clap to this. Louise, Louise. Who are you seeing? Followed by Kimberly Lindsay and Danielle Smith.
And President. Sanders for everything. I really do appreciate every constituency still here. This is Kenny Allen, grandmother. He had two kids. He went to high school. Had one child now, it's the question. I'm here because of policy regulation. It needs to be revised or repealed because um I'm in favor of accepting everybody. But I'm concerned about the direction of policies, leading a lot of female teachers, counselors, or instance, um if we're talking about kids that are confused about their gender, are are they encouraging uh transition? And into encouraging transition when it's thinking about the harm that it does to the body. Are you talking about that if you go through the whole transition, that you'll have to relax that whole functions? You have non-functioning organs that you have.
Louise, can you please expand that your comments with respect to uh specifically five one three eight? Uh, it sounds like a lot of your comments are political and less.
If we're affirming somebody's gender ideology, we're also suggesting that it's acceptable for them to go through the transition process. I'm curious to know, what are you coaching these? You know, I understand he's having a transgender individual that's responsible for counseling students or maybe in charge of the program. I'm not sure about his ideology, what he or she is leading those students to, and so I'm I'm very concerned. Especially now we have court cases looking for kids to go back as adults saying that they were kind of swayed into this, and there's two Asian doctors were making transitions to them. And you got the court case and even they just got deciding whether storing these different facilities that and you know, and and there's like thousands of kids now that are turning to adults that are ready to transition. And I'm not sure that this policy is well advised. Because kids are the mountain ball. And their personalities are vulnerable. You can hear divorce attorneys say, if you have a child against your parents, if you're going on a whim, just face a bit of uh um uh socialization or 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 socking, like encouraging, and then the social media. I I'm just thinking that we have to stop now. I mean, I understand the kids that are struggling with their identities. But there's got to be other ways of addressing that, not necessarily saying that it's acceptable. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Well said. Sir, I've already shared multiple times to the board that your personal rights are welcome, and they're welcome at the podium. However, um the speaking out of turn when you're not at the podium is unacceptable. Please leave the board. Yes, please leave the board. Sir, you have three seconds to leave the boardroom if you do not leave the boardroom. You spoke out of context, and I asked
Then you let that woman get up and go up there and stand there and make a big motion and
You're welcome to leave the boardroom as well.
I don't give a shit. You guys are all fucking wrong.
You have three seconds to leave the boardroom. Officers, can we please have, um we've provided lines.
Don't care about the rest of the kids. The kids get bitched.
This is the
Roll stick in the head.
This woman, please uh Thank you.
Because you had a legislative candidate. Beware.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're continuing to respect the forum in this boardroom. We will not tolerate anything else. Louise Corona, you see? Oh, that was Louise. Forgive me. Kimberly Lindsay, uh Danielle Smith, and Jasper. Eleanor.
Good evening. It's Kimberly Lindsay. It's good to see you guys again. Um, as it pertains to transgender regulation fifty-one thirty-eight, now so you guys can feel it. We've gone through the wall. We are very well aware of what Senate Bill two twenty-five has to say, and it's about bullying. The policies that we're asking to re-put the policy so we can protect our daughters and our sons in their safe spaces. We also don't need anybody grooming our children. We don't want that. We're the parents. Let us do our job. You guys need to back off and stop grooming and sexualizing our children. I heard parents last last session talk about their daughters being followed home, sexualizing our children, and we're acting surprised when they get threatened, that you guys are doing nothing to protect them. I, as far as your guys' democratic policies go, you they support communism, they're going in the middle of the park September eighteenth, the Las Vegas heat of the democratic societies. No, your communist policies to second the parents with their children. Your policies in C C S D. You're teaching your diversity, equity, inclusion, which is just minimizing my son's ability to do anything based on merits. It's disgusting and needs to stop. And we're patriots and we're parents, and we're concerned about our children. And you come up here and you want to just laugh in our faces and call us radical. What are we extremists? Because we love our children? We don't feel like they should be better castigated? We want to protect their daughters in our bathroom safe spaces. Stop doing what you're doing. We're going to continue showing up here. As far as it goes with those books, the books that we are very well aware of, we have the form contacts Moms for Liberty. We have the C C F Forum four hundred. You can fill out, submit it to the principal, and they will have those votes removed from their libraries. We know what they are. We know how to get around this broken system that you guys represent. And just because I have to, because there's a judgment day coming for everybody, I'm going to read to you out of the Bible, which you guys haven't for sure banned yet. That Acts seventeen, verse twenty-two, "Thank you, Reverend, for being here." I hope you hear it. "Then Paul stood in the air of practice, and then men of Athens had perceived that in all things..." You're very religious. You guys are very religious. "...for as I was passing through and considering the objects of your worship, T E I, communism, I even found an altar with this inscription, 'To the unknown God. Therefore, the one whom you worship about knowing him, I proclaim to you, God, who made the world and everything in it, since he is Lord of heaven and earth, does not dwell in temples made with hands, nor is he worshiped for the goodness of..."
This has to do with
There's a children's Protect our children. Don't indoctrinate them into what you have going on. You're transgender, you're grooming, sexualizing, so many lawsuits you guys have pending for what your teachers that you hired to protect our kids are molesting our children. Sixty million dollars you guys have to reserve for these lawsuits. I pray you guys find the Lord Jesus Christ, and that's all that's going to save you in that day.
What do you want to go see? Danielle Smith, why don't you come on up? Uh, fifty-one thirty-eight is not a transgender policy. It's not a grooming policy. The babies read the policy and they come
You still don't know the N R S statute you've been playing.
Ma'am. Ma'am. You just spoke out of turn. I just asked someone to leave. I asked people to leave because they did not abide by the decorum of the business meeting. I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Yeah, I can imagine. N R S three A or eighty-eight has nothing to do with fifty-one thirty-eight. You guys have Oh, by the way, you all are fighting at ethics of your board, both in office. Fuck you.
Okay, now she definitely cannot come back to the board meeting. Um, thank you. I think you have the floor.
I don't know if I can talk that. My name is, I'm a veteran. My children, my daughter, she's crying. Uh, L A. Here, she's charged. By some late, uh, I didn't know. In the back, personally. I, I'm not going to take and address the issues as far as what we've been brought up because of I've been told. What I wanted to present to you December two thousand and four was placed in federal law that the Constitution will be taught in schools receiving federal funds. Because I actually know the answer of what is December seventeenth, you're supposed to be teaching the Constitution. I am a veteran. I gave my time, my life. I have had relatives most friends about their life. Only five percent of the schools in this country follow that federal law. What are we doing here? I'm going to be the solution, not the problem. I am offering you my time, my materials, after school, not even into the curriculum. I teach the Constitution through Patriot Academy briefly. This isn't political. It's not democratic. It's not Republican. It's Constitution. It's our life. It's our country. I teach it to health scholars every week. I also just started another class. I'm going to start another class. And I don't care if it's one person or two hundred. I'm offering my services to you. Have my name my contact.
Thank you, Daniel, for your service. Jasper.
Andrea. I can't add anymore.
And Andrea Adiva. And Andrew. Andrea, I had you twice. You'll just be once. Christiane, who's not after. Andrea.
So, I'm President Superintendent Jara and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been teaching overturning policies fifty-one thirty-eight for obvious reasons. Regarding the rights and needs of students with diverse gender identity, what about the other ninety-nine, some of the students who live in a family there? They are not represented, and they do not go sit in um the bathrooms when they are shared with multiple sexes. And thank you for your time, Nicholas.
For the record, I'm Andrea Aguilar, Treasurer of the terrorist group Moms for Liberty. Let the eye-rolling word looks and paper shuffling begin. Three, two, one, go. Each member of the board should know the oath is to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Nevada. This oath includes performing all duties of office, so help you God. I came across your rules of conduct and ethics, and here are some things I found. In promise, improve satisfaction for families and the community in a climate for improved student learning. F, we're still waiting on this. Board members avoid open debate focused activism for special interests and value collective consensus over individual viewpoints in their decision-making and governance protocols. I seem to remember a sign with Brinkles and Black Lives Matter held up by a trustee, excuse me, Colossus last month. Not only did
Andrea, I'm not going to ask you again. This is the one, the one final time. Please address your comments to the entire board.
Okay, so there were, was a trustee in your honor board that held up a sign. You know what I'm talking about. During the pastor's public comment, but then uh your board members doubled down by posting a photo of two more joining her. That's an obvious bill. Board members shall have loyalty to the people of Clark County, which is paramount to any loyalties to other organizations, cultures, or personal interests. Board members act in a manner reflecting altruistic service to serve the community at large. Board members avoid fulfilling personal agendas regarding policy, program, or personnel. President Morales, I ha- I'm sorry, the President of the Board. I have an actual N R S for you. N R S chapter two eight one A. Um, abstentions declining to vote shall only be used in clear cases of conflict of interest. Houston, we have a problem. You have board members who have an obvious agenda and should remove themselves from voting on issues regarding transgender policies, racial inequalities, and student safety. Parents, the district policies are written with vague verbiage, so it can be interpreted with their agenda. Dads, are you ready for your daughter to come home and start talking about how a male wants undressing next to her? It's not a myth. It's in the five one three eight policy. And it's happening. And you can talk about five one three eight not pertaining to anything. That's not true, it's all there, and the way it's worded, you guys can twist it any way you want.
Yep. It's ridiculous.
Well, my name is Christianity Marsh, I'm the chapter chair, um, for Moms for Liberty. And. I'm here representing many parents that cannot be here tonight, that are working, they're busy. We launched our chapter three, three weeks ago and already have four hundred people sign up with us. Um, this board just should have given an answer to the parents that screwed up your last, last meeting about this books. That are pornographic, we're not against, uh, a certain community, we're worried about. Certain materials that has pornographic and explicit.
Yes.
And one of our trustees stopped, the person was here reading the book that has references for. Glow jobs, sex, anal, orgasm, so we want you to know why our kids need to read that. And you're looking to me that face because it's disgusting, right? It's inappropriate, even for a business meeting. So parents have the fundamental right to direct, uh, their children's education. This is about the constitution like our veteran here just read. I want to be clear, these rights are inherent natural rights, they're not, they're not bestowed by the government or by C C S D. Parents have, has the rights to, um, to take care of the children's education and these rights do not stop at the classroom doors. We do not compare it with school board or with the government. In March twenty twenty, public schools across the nation were closed without parental rights includes, um, C C S D also. Were one, what this. There were, um. Encourage our kids to learn from, uh, for a learning environment from online. And our kids were suffering depression, anxiety. With not being here, social involvement. And then right after this trauma during the pandemic, what is the best C C S D have to offer to our children? Books like Flamer that talks about sex and explicit. In the U S, the right to petition the government to correct or wrong or achieve a goal is fundamental. To the workings of our constitutional republic. We are moms, we're dads, we're aunts, we are concerned parents and grandparents and concerned citizens. We're not the masters, we will not be silenced to protect our, this failing system. C C S D is not paying attention in their own job that is to educate our children. But is indoctrinating with a progressive agenda like policy five-one-three eight. I wanna read some stats for you, you should have a little time, less than twenty percent of graduate C C S D students are proficient in math. And only five-on-seven percent graduating students in our Las Vegas are proficient in math. So we're just here to ask you to do your job and not indoctrinate our.
Lorena. Lorena Vasco. Yes, okay, Stephanie Kinsley, Lorena Calvadas, and, uh, Derrick. And Lorena, yes, okay, here. Oh, Lorena Calvadas and Lorena, are you the same person? Yes, I. Here we are. Go ahead.
My name is Lorena, and I am the vice chair of Moms for Liberty, Clark County. Trans policy fifty-one thirty-eight states on section three. Number one. A, A, option one. Restroom access for students with diverse gender identities or expressions may be determined on a case-by-case basis. Through the gender support tab hot list. Subject to any individual request or privacy. Where does that leave the privacy of our girls? Are you asking or expecting our daughters to sacrifice their safety and their privacy for the feelings of. Others that are confused and are not sure what they will wake up identifying out? Does that seem fair or does that seem dangerous to you? Option two states students of diverse gender identities or expressions have the right to access restrooms. Consistent with their gender identity or expression, which changes day to day. Students with diverse gender identities, expressions may use restrooms. Consistent with their sex assigned at birth, which is logically and rationally the way it always and only should have been. What kind of game are you playing? These kids are in a state of confusion, sometimes they're bi. They change your sexual orientation. What if they get aroused around our females, our, around our daughters? Students, females that are changing next to them. I have a teenage daughter who is mortified at the possibility of this happening because it has happened. If you can, you can Google it, because I'm sure Google is your friend, you can find a lot of stories of. Girls that have even walked out of the restroom because a male, uh, who was identifying as a female got aroused right next to them. Are you really asking for parents? To trust your gender support them? This trans policy is your radical and extreme interpretation of the bill that Sandoval signed into law. And it needs too much. To question. A plan that tracks and monitors that the mental health of our kids. Gee, what could go wrong? Well, I'll tell you the story of Abigail Martinez. The mom of a nineteen-year-old daughter named Yareli, who after being trans in a gender support den much like yours. C P, uh, C P S or D C F S California removed her from her mom, you know, the only person who would have given her life for her. Instead, she became a file for a caseworker. Yareli suffered from depression from not being able to feel her breath area after she was mutilated and had trouble.
Like, it's nothing to do with, uh, C C S D.
It, you can't, you cannot, you cannot dictate what I think. And that's what you're trying to do, this is my opinion and this is what they comment. So you're talking to dinner and this is my opinion.
Very good.
Is that you can see what's in the list, though? Excuse me?
That doesn't matter.
Your children are in school just.
I absolutely do, and that's not.
That's, thank you.
You're, you're, you're right, you're absolutely right.
Excuse me? We're gonna go ahead and let you speak for a couple more seconds.
Okay, okay. Yarili Martinez now is in front of a train and committed suicide, and this is a path you're leading all these children down. And we're trying to stop, and we're trying to warn you that this is what you're facilitating. You can't be included to mental illness. It's dangerous.
Stephanie Kinsley, followed by Edman. Nasak. And Derek Sheen. Shameful.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Kinsley from one of the other terrorist groups, uh, my children's advocate. We're out here trying to, you know, save kids from being mutilated. And so since I need to make sure this is very focused to the board, so I'm very clear, I have questions for the board. Because the board has many more degrees in science and, and, uh, psychology than I do, so I'm asking you why? Why would we support? These agendas that confuse children further, so why? Because I haven't seen anywhere in history where it's working out well, I only see kids dying. Kids are more likely to die after they go through the surgery and physical transition. Of trying to change genders because they realize they made a mistake, now they're suffering so bad. And I'm sitting here, I'm watching the board laugh at the parents. And, and so I'm speaking to the board, so.
Apology, apology.
You owe me an apology?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to know about you.
I'm apologizing because the way that you expressed that this board has multiple degrees and multiple, uh. You're absolutely right, this board is being most educated. Degree board, uh, board with multiple degrees.
Which maybe teaching.
And the way that. I don't mean to indulge in a dialogue, but I did want to apologize for my, uh, laughter because your facial expression actually went to.
Okay. No, it's very privileged of you that you guys get to have the degrees you had, because I, I worked to put myself through college, so that's why, and it's just. Which just wasn't worth it, and I was actually working and it was more beneficial to me, obviously, because I don't have a degree, but I knew. It wasn't healthy to cover my face with a mask during COVID, yet you guys are the same people who pushed that and is kicking me out of this. Same room because my mask wasn't masky enough. So the same people who pushed an insane COVID narrative are the same people who are pushing a. Boys can be girls narrative, and I'm just trying to ask you to repeal any. Any policy in C C S D that leads to more confusion for mentally ill children. And what we should do, we should look at the common denominators with these children. A lot of them are autistic, let's work, let's work with that, you're autistic, you don't, you're not in the wrong body. Ms. Don't say, why do you interrupt?
I'm the type of, they need to go off and we're terrorists, you get those.
My. Offensive to children who have special needs and children who have. It's, I need you to address your comments to the board.
But instead, you're allowing them.
You need to, you need to address your comments.
How do you not, and ask you to the board, and ask you the board, children of this.
Why, why are you encouraging mentally ill children to be unused? And used like a Gucci bag, it's sad, it's unhealthy. And the women and gentlemen with the degrees that you have, you know what you're doing is unhealthy, just like you knew what you did during COVID was nonsense. Yet you're doing it again. So explain to me why? Back it up, if it makes no sense for this little minority of people, but when you leave them alone, they end up growing out of this space. It's like the new anorexia. But instead. This would have been like, like twenty years ago, to getting like older, the anorexic girl, this is so unhealthy, why? Please, board, tell me why you push unhealthy narrative after unhealthy narrative, just like COVID, just like common core map. Just like your trans agenda, why are you guys failing? It can't be this bad on accident. You have to be failing this bad on purpose. Please explain to me, board. With your finest agrees, how you supported the mask mandates?
Uh, to Jack Edwin. Edwin. Please help me. God in the name.
Hi, my name is God, and I'm a resident of, um, uh. Uh, my family here from Nigeria, South Africa, when I was a little boy, and, um. I attended C C S D. For the first few years of my. Um, academic career here in the state. And thankfully, my grandmother and my mother chose to remove me out of that environment, put me to another, but I was actually taught. And, um. I'm here, um, to ask you, uh. Board, to consider, and I've heard a lot, from a lot of people. You know about this subject, and hopefully your eyes not weighed over. I'm asking you to consider going over the policy five-one-three eight. And repeal that. And several reasons, got to stand here for two hours in. A, a lecture about the Constitution of the United States, which I am a citizen, I'm glad to be a citizen. I chose to be a citizen because this is the greatest country on the earth. But I'm not gonna do, I'm just gonna mention a couple of things, um. The, uh, I feel this, I've never come to a board meeting before. I've never chose to, my son is not in the public system, I'm sacrificing every dollar I have to keep him out. Of the public system because I wanted to be educated, not indoctrinated, um. But as you listen to several people talk about different things, and I think you guys have a lot more other issues. Than to be focused on this one thing. There, you know, the children need to be educated, education is math, reading, arithmetic. Not whether you feel like a boy or feel like a girl, whether you want to use the men's restroom to be or the women's restroom tomorrow. You need to get back on topic and focus on educating the children, that is why parents send their children to school. Now, I'm a taxpayer, so I have a vested interest in this. You know, I pay my taxes, just like everybody else who pays me taxes. And it is important for society that everybody is treated fairly. You have people who came up here to express, uh, their, uh, values and express how they feel about this subject. And I watched how this board dismissed them, and I saw others that came up here, and I saw this board support them. Now, as far as I understand. If you're elected to represent the people, you're supposed to represent all the people, not some of the people.
That's right.
Know, and you should represent those who, uh, uh, choose to leave that lifestyle as well as those who do not. Now, uh, one thing I want to say here, this is not a threat, but in, in the Declaration of Independence, it tells us. That if a government chooses not to represent the people, the people have the right to separate.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Derek's mind is out. I would, I would, if he was onto our comments. Welcome to submit them in public, writing, writing, thank you very much, Ms. Derek, she's still here. Thank you, Derek, and then I have James. Or John, I hope I got that right, oh. Hi.
Yes, so, uh, Derek, for the record, and this is a call to repeal policy five-one-three eight. On September twenty-eighth, the board quoted the policy being referenced in five-one-three, it was approved in two thousand and eighteen after the state law required it. A member of the audience as well as a public commentator requested to know what NRS this falls under, no answer was given. There are many Nevada revised statutes, one of which is NRS three eighty-eight, five-one-three-two, legislative declaration concerning safe and respectful learning environments. But it does not explicitly state that the academic setting must have gender support plans created by gender support teams, which proactively encourages gender expressions. So policy five-one-three, it was drafted, but it does not appear that the state law requires five-one-three as it is written. There are only two sides you could be on, you are either for God or revolting against God, the course of the role is in rebellion to God, the role is spiritually dead. To the things that are true and things that were once common sense. The Bible says the time will come when right will become wrong and wrong will become right, our battle in this generation is now within the realm of ideas. Within the realm of what counsel we choose to accept or reject. The school district is not an acquainted body to provide psychological or medical counsel. And if it were, it would be in violation of Hippocratic oath, which states, I consider for the benefit of my patients, and I'm staying from whatever is deleterious and dischevious. I will give no deadly medicine to anyone at best, don't suggest any such counsel. Children are the most vulnerable group and are subject to external influences, so what these external influences don't matter. So why are adults influencing children in their youth, giving children deadly counsel to permanently alter their bodies? It will ravage their mind, it will lead to permanent disfiguring someone through puberty blockers and mutilation. And once that part of the body is gone, it is gone forever, there is no long-term prosperity that comes from corrupting what God has created in you. Individuals are both either male or female, but some people become confused or are hurt, and they don't like the way that God made them. We are all tainted by sin, all of us, it affects our lives, our relationships, our sense of identity. The danger is that's where we can start looking in the wrong places and listening to the wrong voices, we can follow past a little prophecy, but promising, but lead to disappointment. We can try to find identity in various things or people, but this is fine results, but the message of hope is that God is able to bring true transformation and deliverance, deliverance. Deliverance out of bondage, out of sin, out of brokenness and deception. This is usually not a quick or easy process, but real healing exists. Your identity in Christ means that you are a part of God's family, that you can call out to God in prayer, that you are surrounded by a community of believers providing love and support. And help you grow in righteousness and within healthy relationships. Identity in Christ means that you're blessed, you're appreciated, you're saved, you're reconciled, you have everlasting hope through afflictions, you're hurt, you're gifted, you are made new. You are forgiven, adopted into the family of God, you're loved, and you are victorious over evil sin and death. The Bible emphasizes this is how God tells us what is right and what is wrong, and God loves us enough to give us the free will to make whatever choice we want. And the only way to true love is free will, but with that comes the understanding that we are not preaching the consequences of our choices. Because God loves us, he is also why the Bible emphasizes, emphasizes good instruction and wisdom when making the choices that we make. I am here to tell you that you do not have to be a snare by the ways of the world, which are temporary, which change season to season. But you can follow something better, something that remains true yesterday, today, and forevermore, that's something of a someone, someone is Jesus Christ.
James, uh, or Thomas? There's a last name, let me get some. Rachel Turner, followed by Pastor David Schobers. And Jenna Robinson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, members of the board, madam president and superintendent Jara. My name is Rachel Turner, and I am a mother of two Clark County School District children, one who is currently in elementary school and one in middle school. In fact, my children have been at their Clark County schools since their education journey started. We have been a part of three different schools. And I feel really grateful for the amazing teachers, staff, and administration that have been a part, a positive part of that journey. Yesterday was National Coming Out Day, when my oldest child came up to me as transgender, and began wearing twenty-twenty-one. At the age of nine years old, I had a few learning hurt. To figure out how to support them in transitioning socially and providing them with a safe.
Me, Rachel, I don't mean to interrupt her and pause your time. I've asked members of the audience.
I've asked members of the audience to please respect the individual who is on podium. If you have something to say, I hope you would have already said it during your time of public comment. Essentially, we have two more individuals after Rachel. So unless you're upfront, my expectation, expectation of this board, of this policy, of this school district, is that unless you're up on the front on podium, then your comments are not welcome. If you do have comments, you're welcome to leave this boardroom before I ask you to leave. Rachel, please continue.
I had a huge learning curve to figure out how to support them in transitioning socially and providing them with a safe learning space. I am so grateful that there were parents that came before us and fought hard to have protections and support for my child. I am grateful the state legislation passed Senate Bill two twenty five, also known as NRS since five one dot zero seven zero. I am grateful that CCSD created policy five one three eight in compliance with that state law. I am here to thank you for your continued support of the gender support policy. I feel strongly that any change to the gender support policy will negatively impact the physical, mental, and emotional health of my child and so many more. He is a loving, creative, talented young person that works, loves to write poetry. He draws and he loves computer coding too, which he just got to starting seventh grade this year. Super excited about that one. Please do not allow the angry, hurtful rhetoric of a small group of mostly non CCSD parents influence a policy that allows our children, all of our children, to be safe, healthy, and happy at school. My child is not a threat. My child is just another child in our schools. And if you met my child, you would understand that we love each other and that I'm here only because I want to support that child. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate your continuing support.
My child is your victim.
Okay, Lorena, please leave. Actually, uh, so here, please ask the woman as the attendant chapter to.
What happened? There's only so much that will be able to do. As everyone continues to show up to meetings, uh, along with this Kinsley and they continue to disrupt. They leave, um, I think we need to consider further action, um, of their behavior because this is a habit that we all have record of their behavior. Interrupting the department of state. Pastor David Shovers. Please help me share your.
Yeah, it's children's. You got it right the second time. Madam President, Dr. Jarrah, General Counsel, board members. We're gonna go on with a history lesson. I refer to the final words of nineteen sixty one inaugural address of President John F. K. Sixty-two years ago. And I quote, and so my fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. My fellow citizens of the world, ask not what America will do for you, but what together we can do for the freedom of man. Finally, whether you are a citizen of America or a citizen of the world, ask us here the same high standards of strength and sacrifice, which we ask of you. With a good conscience is our only sure reward. With the history, with history, the final judge of our deeds. Let us go forth to lead the land we love, asking his blessing and his help. Knowing that here on earth, God's work must truly be our own. Question I have is, are you as the CCSD board, knowing God's work by pushing the transgender and LGBTQ agenda? I reminded, and another history lesson here quickly, President Obama talked about being on the right side of history. When he used his power to legalize homosexual marriage, the late Senator Harry Reid of the state of Nevada supported this perspective. They said, they said at the time, they believed that they were on the right side of history. They are not on the right side of history. The bigger issue is we need to be on the right side of eternity. The words of that myth are God is watching us. Now I want to say that I believe everyone should be protected. The last speaker talked about her son. He should be protected. Absolutely. My concern is this, the school district is promoting a lifestyle. And in doing so, they're making it their religion. No religion, Christianity, Islam, Buddhism, Hinduism, transgenderism needs to be promoted. Remember that here on earth, God's work must truly be our own.
Hi, Jenna Robinson, for the record, I am a model, CCSD students. I'm a multi-year sought chair. I'm involved, I'm badge, I am present, I'm there. I often come before you when I'm mad, when I've got something that I think you didn't think right. And I always think the gender support claims are done right. In fact, I talked last time about how I think we can improve them because Wacho does it better. However, tonight, I'm having a really hard time focusing on the board and making my comments to the board. So I'll just say this, I would like our board members to know that Clark County has a very serious shortage of licensed foster parents. And I think that, uh, when children in our community get kicked out of their homes for being LGBTQ, being trans, being gay, because they don't have supportive parents, the national lives for student diversity will be there to support them when their children come out. And if their children are not welcome in their homes, I hope we have foster parents to take them in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We are now, uh, comments, we're gonna move on to the location of the agenda. Moving on to item five point oh one, the upcoming meeting of the board of trustees. The next board meeting is scheduled on Wednesday, November first, four P M. So work session. And to be, um, mind flustered, the record to reflect that on Thursday, I think we're going to be ready for maybe at five P M after the. My colleagues, I am looking at this moment in time for a month and we burn. Those people muscles.
Thank you, Madam President, this time, I'm going to make motion for you to.
Thank you, Joseph Velasquez. Trustee Brooks. Thank you, trustee Brooks. Colleagues, we have a motion by trustee Velasquez, a second by trustee Brooks. Please pass it over. Trustee Guzman.
Hi.
Thank you. I believe trustee Williams has, uh, had out early.
No, I'm here.
Oh, forgive me, trustee Williams, please, pastor.
Hi, thank you.
All right, colleagues, that was a seven to zero. The meeting is, uh, meeting.